I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Carissa, we have some public discussions.
Yeah, so I just wanted to come and kind of update everybody on the winter weather, the blizzard that we had this past holiday, open holiday and stuff. So law enforcement was busy, lots of people still wanting to travel when there was no travel advice and they did go out and do some rescues. The KAN, that emergency management gap came in very handy. They did twice up to Bancroft, to Berks, to Woodmore, to the other side of, to the east side of Algonah. Just if they wouldn't have had that, the trucks had a hard time getting through. They were getting frozen up and having to tow them. So it was a good thing that we had that piece of equipment. The downfall is it was so blistering cold and the winds were blowing, the heater just wasn't keeping the cab warm enough and the fluke of that is happening is, I don't know how to do about it. But they were thankful that they had needed to go out and get those people. So it's proven its use, which I'm glad and I'm glad it was available for them to have.
Is it two seater?
No, it's four. You could actually get six people, three in front.
Because you got three.
Yep, yep. So we did identify a few things that we need to add in there and I'll be working on that as well, just to make sure that the equipment is there that is needed. So extra flashlights and things like that. A couple blankets just in case. It proved to be really useful and I'm thankful for that. So I was sending out a situational awareness to you guys, so I'm hoping that came in handy and you were following through and will continue to do so with any of our storms. Just trying to find a format that I really like the best and that seems it's our lifeline. It's the first chart. I really like that. So we'll continue to use that. I had shelters already in place prior to this storm. I had already those arranged on our main travel roads, 169 here and 18 and then up on nine. So we already had those identified and law enforcement were aware of them as well. So they were utilized. Bancroft used City Hall and Sisters Inn. We had a truck driver that was brought in to Lakota and he stayed at the fire station until the vehicle center came and got him and took him to there. So that worked out really good. So I was happy all that worked out fine and we didn't lose any lives. Did talk to Doug quite frequently. We did have some transfers during all of this and we had arrangements for Snowplow to go in front of our ambulance to transport her to Mason City, but the medical director chose not to. We were able to stabilize and stabilize the patient here well enough for us to do multiple transfers on Saturday. So it was a back-to-back trips to Mason City. But all in all, we didn't lose a life, so I was happy with that and everybody got rescued and had the equipment. So I couldn't thank the secondary roads enough for all they did out in that weather and getting people there. So I don't, just trying to give an update.
How many people did they check out or did they?
Twelve car, probably ten, twelve people. I know one car had six. So it may be a little bit more than that. I lost count after so often and it was just trying to radius backward. But it was just, it was good communication to an ambulance.
Thank you, Krista, for giving up your holiday and vacation. Keep your faith safe.
That's what I'm here for.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated December 28th?
So moved.
Don, second. Any discussion? Very none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll carry the hands.
I say did you have any opposed?
Yeah, I do. I, um, I just wanted to confirm that our board supervisors is still doing the things that are financially responsible for the taxpayers. I got into a little overheard a discussion that upset me immensely, wasting of money, I think. I hear you're looking for sprinklers or irrigation system for the lawn here?
I've never seen one.
I know somebody here who's in charge of the budget for the grounds here at this. Well, two employees are out soliciting bids for an irrigation system. And I think that would be the dumbest thing we could do because right after you put that in, you gotta buy water. Unless, I'd, if you need water, this, I'd go down to the sewer plant and bring up some brown water and irrigate it. And I'm sure some other taxpayers would do the same if you needed water. But I think if you guys aren't in control of who's soliciting bids for things, I think somebody needs to get their fingers pinched a little harder and reprimanded for, for that kind of thing. But I know for a fact, there's two employees soliciting bids for an irrigation system for this courthouse's lawn. They can deny it later on if they want. And the guy I talked to said he's not about to give me his bid because that gives him and somebody else an unfair advantage. But they've been soliciting bids for an irrigation system. And I think majorly thing is after we waste the money to put it in, that we have to waste water that is precious in this United States these days. We don't be needing the irrigation system. That's what I needed to say today.
Thanks, Steve. Doug, we're up to the word bridge contract.
Good morning, yes. We did not receive the contract from the Department of Transportation. The bridge was let last Tuesday. A lot of times they'll come in on a Monday. We didn't know how things were going on, so we put it on the agenda. We will put it on the agenda again for next week to approve that contract. It's the bridge on P-64 north of Highway 18. P-64 runs up to Titanica, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do we have any approval of construction in the right of way?
There were no requests for construction in the right of way for the day.
Do your workers and they work like, Sunday was Christmas, Thursday was holiday, yesterday was payday, payday off. Do they get double time?
No.
Just time and a half?
Time and a half, yes.
And if they didn't get to work Thursday or Friday because they couldn't see, so basically they don't even get time and a half, or do they? Or do you have, when do you get time and a half?
They, no, eight hour day. They, Thursday, they worked over eight hours, so hours over eight. Friday, they worked eight hours.
Okay.
Went home, they came in early and went home Friday.
Because they're not getting what they should get because they were.
Oh, yeah. Fair Labor Standards Act requires that, yes. And the contract that the road department has with the board spelled out pretty clearly as to hours over eight hours.
It sounded several people come up to me, the courthouse, they shut it down, everybody gets paid, but the workers are still out there freezing their butts off moving snow so we can get her out. That's not quite right by book. They should be compensated.
They're compensated, I guess, for their work. They do part of time clock.
Thanks for all you did over there. Keeping us informed and everything else is nice.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for being on your staff.
Yes, you're welcome. We'll pass, we'll make sure we pass that on from, to everybody in the newsletter in January.
Anything on zoning or anything else?
I just kind of, with the storm, I wanted to thank Carissa Mueller. We started our discussion, she invited me over Monday afternoon. And we kind of just waited to see what Tuesday would bring, but we had a lot of preliminary discussion of what was going on. And I think that really helped, at least with the emergency portion of it. I'd also like to thank Sheriff Roger Fisher, some of his deputies and law enforcement officers and the dispatchers. We did respond to a couple of automobiles that were stuck in drifts with people that in them and aided in those, in getting those people out of the, out of the cars. So we did have some work there. Big thanks to the road department. They did a lot of work last week, very poor conditions. We do have some equipment that is broke down, we should be able to get that repaired. We are running short, we have two men. We gotta get two hired into I-Taco, we need a mechanic. We had some fuel problems up north, hopefully it'll warm up and get everything going there this week. Hope to get some cleanup, get the road and equipment back into shape. It was a challenge, but I think we did, did very well on it, kept things going, so.
Hopefully that truck hit bad, I heard somebody ran into the back of one of your trucks.
Uh, we had.
Was that sort of the trucks?
It was not a truck, it was actually a motor grader, did not do any damage to motor grader, but did some damage to a automobile who was driving it.
And it was screwed up a little bit.
Yeah, so. And those are the types of things. We're out moving snow. This was on, I think Wednesday. And automobile rubs into the back of our maintainer. Well, you gotta call up law enforcement, gotta get law enforcement out there. It just slows them down because all of a sudden they're not getting any, any snow removal because they gotta wait for the law enforcement, they gotta get the reports all filled out and go from there. Last year, I think it was, we had a similar, no, it's two years ago, last year wasn't hard to do. But 6:30 in the morning, guy passing the maintainer hit the maintainer, well. Four hours later, people are wondering why they're not getting, why the road hasn't been cleaned out. Well, he had a delay of about two hours, you know, just getting everything taken care of.
I heard he thought the snow was just blowing across the road, so he went to pass or something and bam, he rolled him.
Yeah, so, anyway, those, you know, we, there were a couple of times where people were stuck and naturally that takes a little bit of time off, snow removal is, people need to run out there. But when the public hits us, we stop plowing there too.
You don't pull people out, do you?
If it's a life or death situation, yes. If it is not, no.
I heard Friday, my better half, her friend, her husband runs to the state and they have orders not to pull anybody out, but it was so cold Friday, by 9:30 in the morning, he pulled five out. They told him, try pulling people out so they don't freeze them.
Yeah, that's a life or death situation. But I don't know if you guys know where Dolores and Junior Till just live, but right to the north of their house is a very bad spot, right south of our transfer station. And I think, I think it was 11 o'clock on Saturday before we could even, you know, we get, we went up there and got to where the cars were, but it's like the first car, they saw the first car, well, we can make it further than that guy that gets stuck. Jacob Bradmaker and I had a few conversations there, so we knew there were automobiles in there, but one gets piled up, the second, there are three or four cars stopping now. And that, that slows us down too. January 23, that's a Monday, that is when planning and zoning will be meeting to discuss the carbon dioxide sequester plan. So that's what we've got scheduled, we'll get it advertised and all.
Where's that held at, Doug?
I was just gonna hold it in this room.
Can anybody come up?
Oh, yeah, it's open to the public. I'll also have it, I open those up via Zoom, it'll be advertised.
What time is it?
Uh, we haven't put together the time yet. I gotta talk a little bit with Brian and Dave Rock, Mark Stewart, who gives time, but I think it's gonna be around four o'clock in the afternoon. I'll make sure when I email off the paper that I email it to you guys as well.
Doug, before you go, for the snow removal and stuff, obviously I wasn't here, I didn't get back till Christmas Eve, but, so I do wanna compliment you guys on the emergency work and everything, but I know there's some very frustrated people in the northern portion of the county right now with the snow removal or lack of snow removal on gravels. Brian Till just texted me last night after I had talked to you, asking why their road was not cleared. And he asked me to share a message with everyone on the board and you. And he said, I'm irritated that our roads did not get cleared today. We had to plow our own way on gravel for Christmas dinner guests, which makes us look like a third world country. They certainly should have been plowed today. No excuse for that. Let's make sure it doesn't happen again. And there's, there's another Facebook post that was shared with me, I'm not friends with this person, so I'm not going to name names, but in this post it says, don't worry Casoot County, no one essential lives on gravel, I guess. If you're worried about paying overtime, I guess I'm not worried about paying my taxes. Not a shot at any operators, but the ones in the office who spend holidays with loved ones and weren't out in the elements, you go ahead and play politics and there's some other choice words there, but I wanted to share that because there's definitely, there's definitely roads up there. I, I drove a number yesterday afternoon and there's not a single one I wouldn't have sent to plow down on in my area, so.
All right.
So you did a good job though.
I think our operators did a real wonderful job. They, they worked. Yesterday was observed by many businesses as a Christmas holiday. Living in rural Casoot County can be very nice. Living in rural Casoot County can be a bear. People have to realize that. There are times where things are gonna be great and there are times where, especially during the winter, there are gonna be times where you may not be able to get out. We have a workforce, they have families, they like to enjoy their family time as well. They were working every day, they put in hours from last Wednesday to today. They were out, five o'clock, six o'clock, they were out working. They did what they were told to do. And I guess if anyone is not satisfied with that, they gotta, you gotta take some precautions.
I, I understand all that. I think the, well, I asked, I asked Bob Doe from Webster County.
Who?
Bob Doe, another supervisor from Webster County. I'm on several other boards with him and I asked if their maintainer's raining yesterday. He said, yeah, all day. And I said, pavements, gravel, bowl, or what? He said, everything. I'm not saying we would have had to hit everything, but I feel like one pass on the gravel would have made a huge difference in a lot of areas.
And it would have been us working till three or four o'clock in the afternoon as well, so. I, I thought the guys deserved some time off. We were got the pavements, if you could get to the pavements, you were okay.
One of the pavements, I went down to the farm at three o'clock, four o'clock, and Galvez Road, you had to drive on the wrong side on the shoulder, but then I called Scotty and Scotty said, we're gonna hit it one more time before we shut down, except people calling me. And sure enough, there, there they were, busting the last trail for the night until people could get around.
This was the end of last week?
It was Saturday.
Saturday?
Thanks, Doug.
You bet. Slow.
I know that.
I gotta talk to them today and see what's going on again.
Do you have one more thing on here?
Uh, I'm not really involved in that, I guess, that's, I think Vince Johnson, I can, I know it's, I will listen because I know that they're coming off of the road there, so I guess I will listen there.
Don, you representing?
Yeah, this is, uh, you wanted to attend the meeting today?
Yeah.
So he asked me if I'd come in and I progress where it's available on the phone, there's a big question for Ivan. So I'd be, my business advisor last night, he stated that he had done a design and asked me to report it.
Yeah. I guess does Vince have any question on the proposal or?
No, not that at all. It seemed like that approved.
Have we approved and let him do it or give him the dirt off the bank to use?
What's in the proposal, I suppose?
Uh, it's just, they got in a proposal, I have the dirt to, it's all a car, culvert, but I think there's plenty of dirt on the ditch bank on that.
Where's that?
Vince Johnson's.
Yeah, where's that?
There are four.
I, I have the report in front of me, but I don't remember reading that, what he just said, Roger.
That's because you were gone the last two weeks.
There was dirt on I have the entire five page proposal.
Yeah, but you, I'm just seeing Vince was back there telling us everything a week ago. So I mean, if you don't have all your information, that's because you're not at the meeting.
Well, that was not in the folder, or in the report, as it was just discussed.
Well, go on your computer and that's what the two hours are, you could've sat there and listened to the whole meeting.
Guess what? They're not online.
They're up there?
I watched the first meeting I was on already, all of it.
But that's what they're supposed to be online?
They're not online yet.
He's looking at the back fill, $14,000 for fill. We, we did it before for people allowing you to ditch bank dirt.
Well, they sold them.
Yeah.
They sold them though.
So.
Well, in the reported, past backfill, being purchased, it's not coming from the ditch.
So that ditch is gonna have to be pulled down where you're going across, I mean, there's gotta be dirt there.
There's gonna be dirt.
I mean, associate real and putting this there.
So we want approval of that backfill charge in there or if we approve it, he doesn't need it?
Well, we can approve the report, but I think, I don't know if he's gonna go through, is he planning on going through with that?
I believe so.
Does he?
Yes.
I, I think he could come in here and ask, just as the other guys did, to use dirt off the ditch bank.
Well, there's gonna be pulling that ditch bank back on the east side.
Yeah.
To get this driveway.
Yeah, there's, there'll be some dirt there.
Have you been by there, Roger, to see if that looks like up there?
There'll, there'll be dirt.
Yeah.
That's a lot of pipe.
110.
110 feet.
Why's he making so long or don't you know much?
He didn't want to go through somewhere, he was gonna go there.
Yeah.
And on shoulder, the ditch bank is harder than the road up there. On the east side.
Could we just approve what's there and then tell your brother to come in?
No, my brother, my friend.
And say in a few months to, you know, ask for permission.
Right, now he's, I didn't make one, he's got some things going on.
Yeah. So we just approve what's there and then.
These are the work, I mean, the ditch bank is harder than the road on the east side, so there's gonna be dirt moving on that ditch bank. It's good real, but you're not gonna build a driveway like this.
Right, no.
Yeah.
And they gotta dig it a foot deeper than the bottom, so that means they're gonna dig dirt out on both sides of the road ditch and the ditch bank. There'll be dirt dug out.
Yeah.
So I don't totally see that they're gonna need that like backfill.
Well.
Well, it'll be what it'll be.
Right. It's one of those things I don't imagine you know until you're done.
No, you're not gonna. I, I would move to approve the report for the crossing on drain four by Vince. Second, Mr. Plant, Mark?
Would that be, excuse me, Mr. Plant, being in accordance to the design plan by, by industry?
By I N S.
I got in motion, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be reported.
Got that in motion?
Agreed on I N S engineer letter report.
By I N S?
Roger, are you going to require staking and construction inspection because in this, one of the first things that jumped out at me in their opening paragraph, it specifically says that no survey or onsite evaluations were completed for this report. It was all a desktop report, basically.
Yeah, they did, they had the report for drain four when they claimed it.
But that doesn't show if it's currently at design grade or if it's listed in there or what the current status is, so you're relying on a picture in, on a piece of paper to build something that actually has to be built in real life.
It said somewhere in there, it warns that the farther down is the low spot, so if the water gets high, it'll run out there and it won't affect it here.
No, that's upstream, that's upstream of that, there's a lower bank. But that does not have current elevation, that does not have, this report has nothing in there about inspection and actually overseeing it being installed correctly.
He's got in there, he wants it at least a half a foot below the design grade.
Yep.
And that's what will happen.
And that, that's what will happen.
It, so is it going to be required to be inspected and surveyed? Because you can't guarantee that's happening unless you have the equipment to verify that it's happening.
Well, I'm sure, Don, you have to be usable, do those things.
Yeah. In the past, have we ever had them inspect the crossing?
I don't know, if not in records. It should be.
They can't explain either for someone who doesn't follow the hazard, they would tear it back out.
Right.
So they're gonna do it right.
They ain't, they're not gonna do it wrong.
That's correct.
Well, I guess another thing that was kind of concerning was above the cost estimate, there's a paragraph for flow velocity and it says the existing flow in the ditch is 2.4 feet per second during the design event and 3.16 feet when upstream over topping conditions occur. The flow velocity after installation of a private crossing is estimated to be 7.69 feet during the design event, so more than triple. And then 11.89 feet per second over, during upstream over topping conditions. So they recommend riprap for 50 feet on both sides, but one, I don't know if 50 feet's enough, and two, are we reinforcing anything on the upstream side? Because that will have, I would assume, extra pressure and force when all this water's coming down and having to hit a wall and speed up through culvert.
So are you saying that Ivan and Spencer didn't do their job on this or that they're not capable engineers of designing this or?
No, I'm saying I've seen the flows through the private crossing that is just about a half mile west of 169 and there's been a number of concerns about that in heavy rain events and we've had damage to the ditch around that. And we've had damage to the ditch around that area because of that crossing.
So then, those, that damage hasn't been fixed?
It has been now.
Oh, it's fixed.
With this project of pulling the banks back and riprap being added. But it's a combination of.
Hold, there's damage, just like any other repair request. Damage happens only. We put in requests and we.
You can't talk about that pipe northward.
North bank, yeah. West side one sixty nine.
Yeah. They put that in without, without snow.
I, I was told, I was told it was engineered, but when I had talked to Dan about it, he said that was designed for a one and ten year storm. And this has two year forty eight hour storm, so.
It never came. That's board supervisors.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but.
I am.
Okay, well, then we should probably address that situation, I guess. But that has caused damage along the ditch. So I don't know that we should set ourselves up for future damage. I mean, that's a significant change in velocity.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Mark, can you read the motion, please?
To approve the I S G engineer letter report.
I S G.
I N S G, sorry. To approve the I N S G engineer letter report for private crossing for Vince Johnson for the fifty four open ditch.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? A little small vote, please.
Secretary?
Al.
Casey.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
Thank you, both.
Yep. You bet. Thanks, Don.
Yeah.
Clint, you got any questions? Thanks for coming in.
So Roger, is it I S G or I S M G? I agree, I S G.
I S G.
I S G.
I S G, okay.
Should be on or something.
It's I S G.
Yeah. I thought I heard you say I S M G. Sorry.
We have a page app. For the second one, for eighty sixty sub one pile improvement. It's in the folder. Miles due sixty seven thousand ninety nine dollars and fifty seven cents. What's that?
So it looks like you re-signed it. You read the name last year this week.
Yep.
What do you mean?
Can't read name last week, two initials.
First signature?
Yeah.
I know a lot of people's signatures that you can't read.
Well, anybody could have signed it.
Any question?
That's a stretch.
On the K F. Again, it's for sixty seven thousand ninety nine dollars and fifty seven cents. Do I have a motion to approve the K F? I'll make motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by second or any discussion?
That's for the whole thing or just the final of the final there?
No, just for the sixty seven. There still has a tenth disaccompany.
It's just a partial. There'll be more.
It's a partial one.
You not even done with the main yet. Then there's all the labels too.
I'm curious, given up.
I don't know if it's completely done for the year, but during this cold snap, I know it wasn't doing anything there, so yeah, could be. I don't know. Looks like nicer weather coming again, though.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. We have one drainage repair request.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, you have a request.
Yeah, um, Kenny Ludendell, he had called me about this previously. Budyard section nineteen, there's a section of open ditch he thinks needs to be cleaned out because it's silted in, so. That's number sixty six.
What's your interest in that?
Eighty.
Sixty six. So it's for the year. What year we live, what two months?
Yeah, we did. That was, we ended at like fifty something.
September. Supervisor to take care of the request.
I'd like to wish Mr. Plant, do they have a supervisor to take care of the request? Do they have a second?
Also, I can.
Second, like Casey, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, yes. Anything else, Mark? Does anybody have anything else for Mark? Thank you, Mark. We will go to the.
Well, thank you, Marks. It was a pleasure working with you the last four years for this last time. We get some time to work together.
Well, thank you.
You're a very knowledgeable lady. You'll be glad to.
And discussion with our auditor?
He just reminded me that tomorrow night at five o'clock is the manning of the campus for the nearly in reality officials. So we'll have that tomorrow night. Next week, um, is our first meeting of the twenty twenty three year, so that's our big agenda for the year where we. Approve pretty much everything for the year. Um. If you have any questions or need any additions to anything, I'm still working on it when I come board. Um, when I have to look at that again, we have to point business in. So do that next week as well. Um.
We don't take really connected ladies. She's going in.
No, I don't think so. I think we just approve it to board.
You take down these two spots, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Project to the high spot.
Yeah.
Harley's gonna keep on doing it. Well, you haven't heard nothing.
I haven't heard nothing.
Yeah.
I know Murray's gonna stay another year when she's getting on the, she was, I put her on the last year. She took um. Down the spot.
Yeah, so and then next week, um, we have the board meeting, then the front year meeting at six o'clock, and then we have budget workshops on Wednesday and Thursday. So we'll be a busy week next week. And then, um, I'm busy answering budgets, getting this year finished up and getting ready for next year, so.
What's the front year one?
That's the annual one that if you were, you go for supper and maybe.
Tell you what's going on.
Can't ask questions.
Cause you guys didn't go to the front year before, did you? So we ran, me and your grandpa sat beside each other and they just drilled some questions, who needs, and they did that on you, that's, you know, Kyle and Don.
That would have been.
Eighteen.
That would have been one before the election.
So you gotta check in the springer deal? Yeah.
See what's going on.
Yeah, we, um, had talked about, um, water ponds before, um, it wasn't aware of.
Yeah, you got extra water costs, but we don't have any sewer on it. Figure it to a different name, a meter. They don't charge it. If there's another meter, otherwise you have to install another meter.
Yes, and you have to expense another meter, you have to. I don't make any springers.
Water, you don't have to go on along.
So I'll, I'll talk to them. Um, and then I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure having you and I want to see.
Over here next to you.
Well, thank you for your help with everything that you've helped me with.
Done a good job.
I'm not sure.
Kyle, you got any board report?
I do not. It's warmer where I was.
Mr. Casey?
I used to have people calling about roads that I get followed and. Nothing, I went last week. And Matt, don't ever tell me it's normal every two, three days, but with the, like, yeah, he talking again. Otherwise, uh, meetings. No, my wellness was the week before. Should have been last week, but it was the week before, so no, I have an extra meetings.
Donny?
I got care connect to a second, so next week, I don't know if that's how you want that agenda for discussion. I'll just discuss that on order. Right away then.
We'll do it, I'm ready to open this.
Okay. I can do that, thank you.
Well, I have public, our supervisor discussion on our whole business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else, Don?
Nope.
Jack?
Yeah, border health meeting last Wednesday, um, talked about immunizations, uh, COVID health. Emergency plan update. And we're a little short on money for the COVID clinic. And then I guess we talked mostly about the ordinance for the carbon pipeline, that what, what needed to be approved by us. The board decided they wanted to check with the state to see what, if they had any recommendations on that. We'll put it back on for the February fifteenth meeting. I thought that still seemed out to get it approved. So we're gonna see if the, if the state is any input on that. Just suggested maybe add a little more than what the one example had. There was, there was some more good, uh, information later on in there about. Separation distances and stuff, so. We'll pick that up on the, the next meeting if we approve it.
I didn't have any meeting questions.
Well, I guess we have that thing Tuesday night, we're all there.
Yeah, conversation board?
Yeah.
No questions on this, anybody? Kyle, you heard the results?
I did, you had the percentages, yeah.
Okay. Anything else to come for the good of Cassoot County?
Oh, I did have a couple, a couple people talking about that. How far do you think the sheriffs get to lunch? But, but anything about.
Final state's, it's very hardcore, but they want the, these sheriffs to be paid still, the back to Blue Hawk, I think, a year or two years ago.
Okay, but today's papers are gonna cut budgets and spend less at the state, lower property taxes.
Yes.
First, they encourage you to give rates and then they tell you to lower the property tax.
They lower the, they lower on budget at the state level because they pass it to the county level.
Well, and then they, they give all the commercials a fifty percent break. Hearing on it. Do I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Casey?
So moved.
Donny, second that motion? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.